We're now live on all our channels.
Right, good evening, everyone. It is April 6, 2021. It is 6:00 PM, and it's time for the Gallatin City Council to be called to order. We will begin with a consideration by this council to hold this meeting electronically. I'm going to read the declaration for you. It says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the March 16th, I'm sorry, April 6, 2021, Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. You can join the Zoom meeting at the link shown there on the screen, and that link is not going to be a live link, so you can find that either on our website at gallatinTN.gov or on our Facebook page, or you may call in by dialing 470-381-2552 or 470-250-9358. If you call in, the webinar ID is 830-0522-9218. Again, you can find that information on our website or our Facebook page. I do want to tell you that you can only participate in the meeting by joining the Zoom platform. You may also watch the meeting on Facebook, so if you choose to do it that way. And I believe that you can find it streaming on our website as well. So with that, I will second, I have a motion by Councilman Overton to hold this meeting electronically, a second by Councilwoman Love. I'm going to ask that Ms. Kitchell call the role for the vote and also to affirm your attendance at this meeting. So it's basically a roll call and a roll call vote at the same time.
Vice Mayor Fennel?
Yes, and present.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes, present.
Councilman Fan?
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George?
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes, and here.
Councilman Overton?
Yes, and present.
Mayor, we have a quorum and a unanimous vote on the electronic meeting.
Thank you so much. So we will officially call the meeting to order at this time, and we will begin this meeting as we do each council meeting with the invocation. And as is typical, Councilman John Alexander has agreed to bless us with his prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Father God, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for this beautiful day that that has created. We thank you for the city of Gallatin, all the council person that's sitting in and doing the work of the city. And Lord, I just ask for a special prayer tonight for a dog named Misty. I just pray oh God that she will get a good home and a puppy as well. Lord, thank you for bringing her into my life. All these blessings in your son Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. That was the sweetest prayer, Councilman Alexander. I'll must say another prayer for Misty later. Thank you for sharing that. Um, all right, with the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and you have the March 2, 2021 meetings and the March 16.
This is approved.
Okay, a motion to approve by Councilman Alexander, and I did not catch who the second was. I'm sorry.
George.
Okay, Councilman, Councilwoman George with the second. Are there any corrections or additions to either set of minutes? Right. I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the role for the approval of these two sets of minutes.
Vice Mayor Fennel?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven As and zero Ns, ma'am.
Thank you. With that, the minutes are approved, and we will move now to public recognition on agenda-related items. I do want to mention that there are a couple of public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on the amended preliminary master development plan for Winston Place located east of Highway 109 and south of Red River Road. The second one is for the preliminary master development plan for the Harsh property at Cairo Road and south of Hartsfield Pike. The third public hearing is for that, I guess, oh, it's the abandoned railroad right away located north of Hartsfield Pike and east of Airport Road. Public hearing four is the Hartsfield Pike east of Airport Road property, and that is for the annexation. The fifth public hearing is on that same property. No, I'm sorry, that's for the Bloods, Bloods Springs Development. So all those public hearings are happening this evening. If your public comments are about those, you may wish to address them during the public hearings. It is up to you. But right now, we do open public recognition on agenda-related items. Anyone can speak to any item that's on the agenda for the evening. We ask that you give us your name and your address, and we do limit the comments to three minutes. And I think that's all I need to tell you. Mr. Henshaw will be taking the calls in order. We ask that you raise your hand. You can raise your hand by phone by using star nine. If you're on the computer, if you take your cursor down to the bottom of the screen, you will see a raise your hand, and if you click on that, it will show that you are here and wish to speak. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Henshaw for public recognition on agenda-related items.
Very good, Mayor. We do have Kim. Go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Hey there. Good evening. Kim Baker here. I reside at 366 Woodlands Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. I am coming at you tonight on behalf of the business community and the repress, as a representative of the Gallatin Chamber of Commerce. The topic I wanted to talk about, I don't believe is actually on the agenda, but it's my understanding that it is going to be discussed tonight, and that is the use of the public city parking lot for a car show.
Um, Ms. Baker, you're right. It's not on the agenda, but with this council's approval, you can go ahead and address it. Any objections from anyone on the council? Okay, saying none, you may go ahead.
Thank you. I do believe I sent over to Angela yesterday, and I believe she passed it along to the council, a short survey I conducted amongst downtown businesses. If many of you were around a few years ago, and we conducted a similar survey when there was a car show that was happening in the city hall parking lot. At that time, the general consensus was from our businesses that it was negatively impacting majority of businesses. Those who tracked their sales and were able to, you know, show evidence of their sales records from the car show evenings showed a significant decline in their sales on those nights, which is why the chamber and those businesses advocated for that particular car show to be relocated to a different site. And I believe it has been happily happening at the Civic Center parking lot. It's to my understanding that there's a potential another car show coming back. So we went back to the drawing board, conducted the same survey, which those results you have in front of you. As you can see, if you reference those, we had of the ones that surveyed, which just to let you know, there are about 30 businesses in the downtown area that do have customers, clients, or employees that park in the city hall parking lot during their operational hours on Saturdays. Of the ones surveyed on paper, you will see that there was 13 that said no. I had three others that said no that were undocumented in that particular survey. We have two that were indifferent. They said they didn't really care what happened either way. And then there were about 10 others that I was not able to go to, whether their businesses were closed when I stopped by, or they were, they had, a lot of them actually had a lot of business, which was really great to see. And so I just turned away because I knew that wasn't important to interrupt for. And I would feel certain that most of those, because a couple of them are fitness facilities, they take appointments, would have, this would negatively impact their business during that time as well. On behalf of the chamber and the businesses we represent, we feel that this is not a good move for anybody to be using the parking lot to close it for a reoccurring event, especially coming after a year like 2020, and especially during a weekend when majority of our businesses are open, and some that is their primary day of sales. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I hope you will certainly take that in consideration moving forward. Thank you.
And can I bring up something, Mayor?
Um, sure.
Yeah, I think, I think that they wanted to pull this from, you know, we weren't voting on it tonight anyway, but they didn't, they didn't see any need in bringing it up tonight. So.
Okay. Well, that's not what we would deal with under other business. I just didn't want her to have to wait till the end of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just, I just want to bring that up. And, and another thing too, Kim said something about closing it. They, they never wanted to close the parking lot. So.
Right, right. And I think, I think seeing the survey, I don't think they were necessarily at, I think they were clear on that. I do want to correct something I said too, for those wishing to comment under public comment. I think I said three minutes. You actually have five minutes, so I apologize for that. Now we'll set the clock accordingly.
Can I re, am I still here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was going to reiterate what Craig said. We did not say that it would be closed. We just said that it would be used during that time. And I think that again, the consensus was having usage and occupied during that time would negatively impact, and especially adding in that the public parking lot by the city hall, or I'm sorry, by the library is now closed for courthouse construction. That takes away more of the parking. And again, while most of us on this call and most of us that, you know, are in the downtown area frequently, which I hope all of you are, we know that there are a lot of parking spots that are, you know where they are, but a lot of folks, especially those who are newer to that area, there is certainly that parking perception that there is less parking available. And those that are, that lot that's highly visible, that is not one that we need to shut down or highly occupy for other uses than parking vehicles that are supporting and shopping in our retailers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
All right, Michelle, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. This is Michelle Gervant's 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I wanted to talk about the Twin Eagles annexation, and then I'll also just talk at the same time about the Bloods Springs annexation, because it's the same, basically the same thing. I emailed all of you. I've asked numerous times at these meetings in the last probably, I don't know, nine months since the Twin Eagles has been in front of us. And it's your job to do the right thing for the city and the right thing for Gallatin. And we are Gallatin, us the citizens who live here. And the question that I keep asking is how are we going to pay for two more fire stations? Broken record, because I keep asking the question, and I'm not getting an answer. How are we going to pay for two more fire stations in the next five years? I'd like to have, have it discussed. I think this is an important question. The capital outlay request for the fire department for the next five years are significant, $9.5 million. And the biggest capital expenses for us are building two new fire stations, and this is a direct need resulting from annexing Twin Eagles and Bloods Springs, not to mention staffing two more fire stations and equipping them. Mayor Brown, a couple months ago, you said that hiring another crew of firefighters after only three years from the last one is a lot for our city. You hinted at a tax increase if we had to pay for another crew so soon. So if that's true, how will we afford two more crews plus building two more fire stations plus all the equipment? And this is a serious question. And you owe us the citizens an answer, because we pay for this with our taxes. This is our money you're fixing to spend. And if these two annexations can't be properly serviced unless we build two more fire halls, and that's what it says in the plan of services, because I read them for Bloods Springs and Twin Eagles, and it says that the recommended response time is four minutes, and it's, these are not within those, that recommended response time. And I was happy to see that we actually just got a better rate. I guess that can help our, our insurance, because we got a better rate with our, with our fire department recently, and I'd like to see us keep that. I don't want to see us annexing land that's outside of those, those response times, so that we're going to like have a lower rate again. I also don't want to see us have our taxes increased, because we need to be able to pay for these fire stations. I, I think that there's a solution. I, I think that Twin Eagles can be developed in the county, this, this section, and it would be a nice buffer between the, the city part of Twin Eagles and that windy dangerous road. It's the fact that larger estate lots are in demand, and Mr. Jones would not lose any money by doing estate lots, and he would be doing the right thing for the neighborhood. I don't understand why y'all asked us to do that survey that we did for Plan Gallatin and, and ask what kind of things that we wanted to see in the city, and a lot of people wanted to see more estate lots, but we're not getting any more estate lots. I watched all the meetings, and everything is townhouses and little, little tiny lots, and smaller and smaller lots with the houses only five feet from the property line on the side. But people want estate lots, and they'll pay a lot of money for it. So we have lots of small lots already approved, probably, I think about 10,000 lots that we have, residences that we have already approved in the pipeline. And I'd like to see some more estate lots, and I know that there's people that want that. So anyway, I wanted to give you my opinion. I would like to have you discuss how are we going to pay for these fire stations, because it's in the plan of services that we need them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Cell phone ending in 085. Go ahead. Do I have to hit star six to unmute? I think that's David Brown's number. I'm gonna, I think maybe he raised his hand by, by mistake. Let's move on to, oh, go ahead.
This is Scott, this is Scott Goodwin. I live at 592C Douglas Lane, and I'm calling to object again on the Twin Eagles project. I, you know, Douglas Lane is a narrow, windy road, as you've heard tons of people say multiple times. The city council seems determined to not just negatively impact Douglas Lane, but the people of Twin Eagles by putting people in harm's way. That road is extremely narrow, extremely dangerous. I had a tractor I passed today. Literally, I had to get completely off of the road for it to pass. Last week with the rain that we had, and I'm talking about before we had the excess part after one inch of rain, that road was underwater. So I think taking a pause on 171 homes due to safety issues that have not been addressed, while there's still another 4,000 potential homes that are in the pipeline within two miles of Douglas Lane, that does not impede the stated goal that the city council has stated repeatedly that we need to build homes because they're needed here. There's still a ton of homes that can be in the pipeline without jeopardizing people's safety. I assume all you guys are aware this was on the Channel Four News today at four and five. I think there is going to be some more follow-up on this about the safety concerns of the road. I think these things should be taken seriously. I think we're taking advantage of the residents of Twin Eagles by connecting them to a subpar road that can handle the current traffic that we have, and it's solely for the benefit of the developer. You guys, I think, should be representing the people who voted for you. I'm yet to hear anybody explain how the planning department turned us down, and why you guys think that that was not a smart idea for them to do. It was not too many calls ago that they, you guys had spoke out, somebody, either a representative of the developer or somebody on the city council stated that the developer at one time did own access on the 109, and he sold that access that he had. And then they tried to clean it up like a week later at the next meeting, saying, well, that was a misstatement. That's not true. I'll tell you, it's come back out again that there was something supposedly 10 or 15 years ago, where there was a land swap or something where there was access, and I don't think we should be punished, because this wasn't thought through, or the CDO's somebody, and we just kind of got to turn a blind eye from a safety standpoint. I urge you guys to really, really take this seriously, take a pause. People needs to be heard in person. There's a lot of people that cannot get on the call. And I, I understand you guys say, we hear a few people, and we hear what you got to say. We should be doing in-person meetings, and there would be nothing like, people don't have to speak, but if you have 100, 150 people that you're looking at, you understand the volume of resistance to this. If you just take calls from a few people on a phone call, it looks like a handful of people. And I'm telling you, that's not where it's at, and this will continue to get looked at. I hope you guys do the right thing and, and pull back on this one development until safety issues are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. June Hedge, go ahead.
Yes, I am June Hedge, and I live at 604A Douglas Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. And I'm requesting that you stop the Twin Eagles expansion that consists of the 59.10, more or less acre tract with 171 dwellings proposed for, for this phase 15 of the Twin Eagle subdivision, which is, as we all know, north of Wildcat Run and east of Douglas Lane. This council has, has allowed this subdivision to reach 15 separate phases without requiring an ingress and a second ingress and egress for these people living in Twin Eggs, Twin Eagles. This is just not, it's not right. Now, all of a sudden, it's become an urgent matter for the council, apparently. You know, this, this is sometimes indicative of city councils, which they do not put enough forethought into the planning of things in the initial stages. The people of Twin Eagles, they do need a second ingress, egress, but it makes one wonder, why did it take 15 phases of this one subdivision with this one developer builder to bring the lack of the second ingress, egress up to light? I mean, was, was somebody there in the council, you know, asleep at the wheel, or just, things like this happen when there's not enough planning. You just become kind of a rubber stamp-like thing. And, and it's just, there's, there just does not seem like that there has been enough planning that has went into this. I'm sure the Gallatin City Council, I know it's made up of very competent and capable individuals. Every one of you is, are, are great people. I'm, I know. But it's, it just depends upon what you want the city of Gallatin to look like in a few years. And I think when Michelle was talking earlier about the estate lots, what's wrong with that? I mean, granted, you may initially not get as close a density, but I mean, look at what happened on Long Hollow. I mean, how many years ago was that that Long Hollow was developed where, you know, the estate lots were it? Now, Long Hollow has, and has been for many years, an extremely desirable place. And you'd never see a house or a property sitting there on Long Hollow that's been for sale for long. People want them. People, and, and a lot of people are coming into this area that want a good quality of living. And, and I'm not saying that, that the smaller houses, you know, where there's, you know, multiple houses on, on one acre of land. I'm not saying that that's not a good quality, but, but Gallatin should be several steps above that. I mean, I really do believe that. And, and to me, I think, look at, look at Long Hollow, that, that corridor through there. And, and is this not what, what the future of Gallatin should be? I mean, is it, is, do you really want your, your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren to grow up here in this city? And, and it's like, you know, how many houses can we grow together per one acre of land? That's just not, that, that's not good thinking. And, and I don't mean to beat a door's dead horse, but it just, you know, it's just, but what's the maximum number of houses that should be put on one acre of land? One, two, three, four, five, six? I mean, it, you know, you, after all, I mean, if, if the dollars, if the tax dollars is all you want, you could build with this many acres, you could build a number of trail parks, and you'd get the revenue, you'd get the tax revenue. But what about apartments? You know, you could, this, this number of acres that we're talking, talking about, not just here, but in this corridor here, that, that would put, that would build a tremendous number of apartments. But is that what you want for the city of Gallatin? You know, that's something that I think needs to, that the council really needs to think more seriously about, you know? I mean, it's just, so a lot of people have to live in apartments. And, you know, and God knows Nashville has got lots of them, and a lot of other places do. But should Gallatin not be, you know, maybe a, a step, a step beyond this? But anyway, but as I've stated before in previous meetings, Douglas Lane is, is an old county road. There's no shoulder of the road, probably from 16 to 20 feet, depending on who you've talked to, wide, lots of curves. It's a dangerous road. Even your planning committee, commission has said that. But when, when my, my mailbox, for example, has been hit a number of times, and I think my, right, I think measures, it measures like maybe 16 to 17 feet where my mailbox is. And, you know, I mean, I know people are not going down there, they're just deliberately hitting my mailbox, you know? It's just that apparently there's just something that comes by that, you know, somebody has to take the mailbox. But it's just, when another car comes towards you, you have to slow down. And there's a lot of people, if they're going back and forth to work, and they don't know that what this road is, I just don't, I think the safety issue has to, has to come in there. But like when an UPS or FedEx vehicle, you had better come close to a stop. But, and I, I mean, I drive a, an old 2009 Honda Accord, and I can just visualize my Honda Accord, you know, being sideswiped by a FedEx truck.
Miss Hedge, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but your time is up.
I don't have another minute?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you for your, your listening to me.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry Foster, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I live at 1816 Liberty Lane, and I'm one of the county commissioners that represent the Eagles project that's under consideration. I feel that one of our highest responsibilities is public service, services to respect and uphold the safety of our residents. I feel that this project does not meet the high standard that is required for our residents in regarding Douglas Lane and the narrowness and the, and the crookedness of that road. I'm in possession of a petition of 100 citizens that signed that they are opposed to the exit road from Twin Eagles dumping out on Douglas Lane due to the increased traffic. Your own planning committee has turned this project down, I think at least once, maybe twice, due to safety concerns. The county commission has turned down a wedding venue that would only have been operated on the weekends that was on Douglas Lane due to the same safety concerns. There are families that live on that road. There are school buses that travel that road daily. And I would just urge the council to delay the approval of this project. So a comprehensive study could be done based upon all the other added neighborhoods that are planned in that area. If this is approved without that, I feel that there's going to be possibly, you know, a tragic consequence of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kyle Ring?
Good afternoon, council. I live at 153 Summerland Drive. And I'm talking in reference to Winston Place. So I understand this is already in the city. I understand this is going to get developed. It was, excuse me, originally going to be a church, and quite honestly, I'm a little happy I'm not going to look at a parking lot now. I'd rather look at something else. A subdivision does sound better. The developer of this actually reached out to me for my concerns in the planning meeting, was very upfront with requirements to flooding, et cetera, which was actually nice to see. One of the things that he voiced a concern on, that I've also voiced a concern on, that seems to fall on deaf ears to the planning commission, at least in the last meeting that I attended, is the traffic flow. The reason I bring this up is because just, just north of us, the Bowles Farm is also going to get developed. Again, completely understand. I understand we need houses. But the excuse that we kept being given and fed was that they were for senior homes, or not senior homes, but maybe a retirement community, and there'd be different traffic patterns. Well, that's all well and good until now there's apartments, and now there's townhomes, and now there's, there's other things in there. So let's just say there's going to be 2,000 homes built within me down to wherever the new bypass is going in. Okay, so that's 4,000 trips a day on average. And you're going to make a cut through from Wedgewood on the other side of 109, straight through Summerland over to Bowles, which originally was not part of the plan and is now. Again, I understand it's got to get developed. We are concerned about the safety of the kids in this area. We actually have a special needs child who lives right on the corner of the property adjacent to the MRO that's going to be brought into this. So we handed out flyers, everybody in the neighborhood, they were looking forward to an in-person meeting. Based on the letter it read that way, unfortunately, it's not in person. So I'm speaking for those who aren't on or could not be. But everyone in this community is extremely concerned about the through traffic through Summerland to Bowles and were to connect over to Red River. and were to connect over to Red River. It's not that we're opposed necessarily to the subdivision. Some are, some aren't. The main concern is the traffic. I will say, coming home today from taking my son to school on one oh nine, that exit ramp from one oh nine to three eighty six was backed up the Wedgewood. So now we wanna put in an intersection there? That sounds like a recipe for disaster and more accidents. That, again, when I said that, planning commission, I felt like they scoffed at me. So I actually like what was proposed from the developer. I actually think he's got a really good plan. I think it's gonna bring some nice value homes to Gallatin. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of you trying to find an area that's already in the city to develop. I would like for them to really, really think about the number of trips that we're adding onto this little corridor. And the amount of traffic we're gonna try to shove through it and then the, the added risk that's gonna present to citizens for traffic. Um, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is power outages and or surges. Um, I believe I mentioned this once before, above development coming up here. We have, I, we've had two since our last meeting in my house alone, surges. Luckily, I have a search detector in the house, but I've never lived anywhere in my entire life where I've had this many surges. I don't know if Gallatin Utility has a plan to put in a substation, something of the sort to compensate for the added houses or the added businesses or anything of the nature, but I think it really needs to be reviewed from all angles to see, can we actually sustain infrastructure wise for a basic thing is turning on a microwave in this area? You know, maybe that needs to be something for the planning commission. I'm not sure, but again, when I've said it before, I haven't gotten anywhere. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you. Brian Goodwin, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, uh, I am calling opposed to the, uh, Twin Eagles annexation. Uh, called pretty much each of the meetings and I know we.
I'm sorry, can I just share your address, please?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's a six oh four B is in boy Douglas Lane. And, uh, like I said, I was calling in regards to, to the annexation, which I am opposed. Um, there again, the dangerous road is probably the main issue. It's a, it is a narrow road. I know several have said, oh, it's eighteen to twenty feet. It's not. I know that, uh, me and, uh, a neighbor actually passed on the road yesterday and full size, two full size pickups. And I know he took pictures and videos of how close and we were at the edge of the, the, uh, seam of each side of the road. And there was not room to even hardly slide a door open, be able to get out between the two vehicles. I don't know if that was shared with y'all today or not. Uh, I know he was planning on doing that. In addition, I guess one of the questions also that I would have this, I know that, uh, Bill Duncan sold the, the fifty nine acres that's being discussed, what? The amount of traffic that is gonna add to this, but what is gonna happen when he sells the other twenty six acres he's got to another developer and they put more homes on that property? And then we're gonna be adding that many more vehicles to this road. Uh, the safety issue really needs to be looked at. And I don't know how all these vehicles are gonna be getting out at the end of the street on the twenty five to go the direction. And I haven't heard anyone call from Cambridge Farms, uh, the, the subdivision right up twenty five there. Right off, uh, Bradford, I believe it is. Does anyone realize how much through traffic's gonna be going through there? I mean, already, I'm sure the people in there don't like the traffic that comes through there based on when it opened. But when all this here, people's not gonna wanna go left up to one oh nine because of that intersection. They're gonna go right. They're not gonna go to Cotton Town. They're gonna, you ain't go over through Cambridge Farms. Uh, and that's gonna be a busy, should be a four lane highway running through that subdivision to get out on the other side of Long Hollow Pike to get on, uh, Vietnam for three eighty six. Uh, I don't, I don't think some of these things are being looked at and that is what's gonna happen. I mean, I go to work at two in the morning, so I don't have a problem getting out, obviously. But when my wife goes to work at seven, I, I would guarantee you, when that opens up, she'll be sitting back three, uh, two, three quarters of a mile from, from getting on to twenty five. You're talking about adding thirty, forty five minutes to a drive because there's not gonna be a traffic light down there. Uh, the safety, the heavy traffic, and like I said, nobody's gonna wanna go up towards one oh nine. They're gonna go through Cambridge Farms. And like I said, I don't know if anybody at Cambridge Farms is listening, but you may wanna think about that because the flow of traffic will be heavy. Um, and as I've said all along, I, I, I really hope y'all do the right thing. That's kind of what's been said here. Instead of trying to push it through, if it, I mean, Mr. Jones should have tried to figure this out before he bought the property. Instead of buying the property, then trying to figure out how to fit the, uh, square peg in a round hole. Uh, because that's what he's doing right now and for some reason, it, I mean, it's looking on our side like it's gonna get pushed on in that little hole. So, but that's what we're against. Uh, hopefully y'all do make the right decision. Uh, and, uh, I do appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Kathy, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kathy Taylor. I live at one ninety one Avalon Drive in, uh, Twin Eagles. And just a few things. First of all, I would like to thank those of you that are looking at the camera and listening to us. Uh, maybe you're not aware of how you look to us here, but that would only be two of you. The others are yawning, biting their fingernails, taking notes, reading, you know, and so that's very offensive to me as a fairly newcomer to Gallatin, but Ms. Love, especially you, you have really been very attentive and I appreciate that. Um, which one of you is over our district, since I'm new to this area, which one of you is, is my elected official councilperson? In Twin Eagles.
This is a public comment period, so just, uh, feel free to go ahead.
So I can't ask a question. Okay, well, all right, I'll look that up when I get off.
Council helper out, introduce yourself.
My name's Jimmy Olton. I'm one that ha- represents your district and there's two at large council people. There's three of us that represent your area.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Who's one of them?
I am, Sean Finell, at large.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I saw today, um, I heard on the news report tonight, there's currently five hundred homes uh, in Twin Eagles. That would mean on the average that each home has two cars. Have any of you tried to get out of a one subdivision, one entrance and exit subdivision at seven thirty in the morning to go to work when there's a thousand other cars trying to get out? Well, I have and it's very difficult and you have to plan twelve to fifteen minutes to get out of our subdivision already. Because we only have one entrance or exit. Douglas Road won't help that any. Okay, that goes the opposite way. Nobody's traveling to Portland to go to work in the mornings. There are very few of us are. Okay, most of us are headed into Nashville and we have to get out on Wildcat. So that's something that no one has mentioned that is a, a current problem that we have. Um, and so I would like to see that addressed. Um, and I'd like for maybe a couple of y'all to come and try to get out of the subdivision at between seven thirty and eight one morning. Um, and I, I'm also thinking the emergency part, and I know that's been brought up in, in other meetings. Um, but if there was an emergency, say a tornado come, comes through, we're all having these watches in mornings now. Um, well, how many lawsuits would Gallatin have because nobody can get out of our subdivision? Even with Douglas Road being the narrow, tiny, backfield way to get out of here. And now all these apartments and condos are be, gonna be coming through here now too, to get out on Wildcat. Um, you know, have you thought about that? The consequences that those, that that will have um, on the city of Gallatin when all of those lawsuits come in because we can't get out of our neighborhood? Or even if they do do Douglas Road one, it's so small and it'll be so backed up. Um, just another thing that, that they haven't said, although I've agreed with all the callers. I know it's a done deal. I know everybody's just sitting here kind of watching us. Um, you know, obviously you're rolling your eyes and, and being bored with us, but, um, you know, a few things you might wanna think about. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Janet.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ma'am.
Uh, we own a home in Twin Eagles on Lily Crest, uh, and we.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you please introduce yourself and with your last name and give us your address for the record of the meeting?
Janet Landry, six two six Lily Crest in Twin Eagles.
Thank you.
And, uh, we've also owned, uh, business property in Gallatin for thirteen years. So we're very familiar with, um, the area and we've watched the growth sadly. Uh, because we realized that the infrastructure has not actually been carefully looked at and planned. Um, for everything that's happened in the last five years. Um, I've been on Douglas Lane many times and I, we, uh, came close to purchasing a property there ourselves because we love the area and we love the, um, the farm look of everything out there. It was a, a goal we had when we moved here from California many years ago. Watching that disappear has been very difficult. Uh, as long as something is done well, we're, we're happy with it. We just do not feel that this is being done well at this point because of the lack of infrastructure, the raising of the taxes to cover things that um, actually wouldn't have to be raised if it was, uh, being done a little more, uh, conscientiously. And I'm sure that the homeowners who purchased on Douglas Lane over the last number of years and probably some of them that have been there for decades, did not purchase there thinking that one day they would be overrun by traffic. And the road is not capable of handling the kind of traffic that will be added to it if the annexation happens from Twin Eagles. Uh, the comments that have been made about Twin Eagles being a one, um, egress ingress is very valid. It's very difficult at times to get in and out of there. You wait and wait and wait for the traffic on the twenty five to clear up so that you can get out. And sometimes someone will, um, leave an opening and let you come out. We're grateful for that. It's, um, I guess our biggest issue is the overload of traffic on a road that is not built for that. And also the lack of, um, forward planning for the infrastructure, the raising of taxes in order to, um, cover for all of that. And, uh, I appreciate being able to be on here and you're listening to us. I would love to see, uh, the meetings being held in person again. And I feel that the, uh, the COVID restrictions are getting very close to where that can happen. I believe more of us would show up. Uh, it's difficult to be heard and seen uh, on, on this kind of a platform, but I do appreciate you being there and paying attention to us. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Julie Vero, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I have been, I'm pretty sure on all these meetings and, um, oh, I forgot my name and address. Uh, Julie Vero, six one four Douglas Lane. Um, I agree with all of the concerns that you've already heard. And I think this process is extra difficult because every time we come on these meetings, you've heard all of this already, which may be why some of you look sleepy. Because there's not a way to have dialogue about it. And, but we keep feeling a responsibility every time to say it over and over. Because we can't, we don't have a way to know that we're being heard. Um, except through the way you vote. And, you know, that's one of the downsides of the Zoom, I think. Um, but we all are very concerned with safety. You all have a very important job of planning. And it's, it's got to be really difficult. But I think the whole traffic issue, um, the number of homes, the number that are being built in this one area is gonna overload the roads. Um, and that's a big concern and I don't hear any creative planning to try to come up with some middle ground. You know, like estate lots, for example, or something that would allow for some development, but not on the scale that is gonna cause safety issues and major traffic concerns. So I'm not gonna go over all the roadside again, sizes again and all that. You've heard it. You know that we're concerned, but I just hope that you can can try to think creatively about, are there any alternatives? It, is there anything besides just the black and white positions here? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, U seven oh five A C, go ahead.
Good evening, city councils. Mr. Patrick Reeners, three one seven Malone Drive. And I, you know, I, I gotta thank everyone for calling in. I just got a couple of things to say. Um, when I come to you, city council, people already know, I, I do my research first. I might have ways to help the situation rather than just bringing situations on the table. So there's a couple of different ways we can handle the issues that have been brought up tonight. One is with possibly lights with sensors, possibly the development could get together amongst themselves like we did back in the old days and come up with a bus or something to get people to another place. I don't know, but I would, I would look for answers. So for example, if the road is dangerous, then people need to go slower on a road because when Gallatin started back in eighteen hundreds, it was small. Now it's bigger. It's been growing the whole time. Everyone in all these developments helped Gallatin get bigger and no one was promised it is gonna stop. So I think everybody and all these great people that called could come up with options and solutions, maybe email Susan or talk to the mayor and try to come up with solutions to help this because people are only in Gallatin because it grew. So why don't more people deserve to come to Gallatin? I, I don't understand it. But that's all I really gotta say on that issue, the car show. I don't know if we can get the church's help or someone to help with parking or something, but I'm pretty sure if the people get together and talk to each other, they can get the church or someone to make the parking happen. And I'd be the one like to talk and say, hey, you know, this isn't a problem. We did this. There's parking. We talked to these people and give you guys solutions too. Because you guys aren't the, the world's gods. You, you guys are people. You, you're not gonna hate solutions. You know, so when people come in here, I, I'd love to hear some solutions along with the, with statements. That would be great. We need the positive input. I mean, the city's much positive, it's growing, just like it did when the people that are here came here. Thank you.
Thank you. Cell phone ending in two five seven. I have to hit star six to unmute. Again, the cell phone number ending in two five seven. And star six to unmute yourself. All right, cell phone call will come back to you. Let's skip ahead to Priscilla Claros Ring. Go ahead. You'll have to unmute her. There you go.
Hello, this is Priscilla Claros Ring. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, I reside at one fifty three Summerland Drive and I'm. I reside at one fifty three Summerland Drive and I'm calling about. I guess in regards with the new development for Winston Place. And my husband had called earlier, so I'm going to bring some points he didn't. Some of the concerns we have in this general area would be flooding, which has been an existing issue, unfortunately. We quite a few of the neighbors are great in knowing that we are going to have a new development of housing, which is personally, I would prefer that than seeing empty buildings for the majority of the time. But flooding is a major concern, given the fact that the Bulls Farm, the Bulls Farm, excuse me, which is across the street from us on Highway twenty five. They that absorbs quite a bit of the rainfall when we do have not even flooding rains, just regular rains. And then we have, I believe it's East Camp Creek that runs directly behind us and it floods and overwhelms constantly and Blade Street, which is directly behind Summerland Drive, they are constantly underwater. It's getting to the point where now on Summerland Drive. For instance, I'm pretty close to the end, close to the creek. It's in my backyard. It's rising closer and closer and closer to our house. And it's it's a major worry. It's a major concern. So with the new development, we want to, you know, make sure that with all this surrounding development that's happening within a quarter of a mile of this area, we have Winston Place, we have Twin Eagles, we have the Bowles Farm. It it's an overwhelming amount of flooding. And then my husband had mentioned the power outages that seems to happen. So I won't bring that up, but another major concern is we are a dead end street. It will be developed eventually to have Wedwood Drive, which will cut through into Summerland Drive and connect twenty five. We have a lot of children on the street and we have several that are actually blind with special needs. I would like to ask of the city. If possible, lower our speed limit down here. I think it's currently maybe twenty five or thirty. But if it's going to help the kids and no matter what we do, we can't stop this traffic that's coming. Maybe reducing the speed limit or making sure we have some kind of speed bumps or possibly add an extra stop sign or two to help protect the children that's already here. And then we don't have sidewalks. People walk. So that would also protect just, you know, the neighbors that are currently here. Uh, excuse my voice. Allergy season. But yeah, that's really all I could think of right now. Thank you guys so much for your time. Really appreciate it. City of Galton, we're happy to be here. We just we want to be here for a long time and we don't want to have to move because of the safety of our our kids. And you know, chances of our houses flooding and losing power constantly. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Josh Graham, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Graham. I live at three zero six Wildcat Run. Calling predominantly regarding the Twin Eagles annexation. But what I have to say, I think applies to most developments. At the last meeting, our mayor said that we're approving these developments not to attract more residents, but to house the residents that are already here. And that's funny to me because I don't see people camping out on the streets and I don't see our parking lots of our hotels overfilling. It is one hundred percent to attract people to live here. It is the responsibility of this council to increase tax revenue without increasing the tax rates and without increasing tax liabilities. And if you have businesses moving to Galison and you have commuters come and work at those businesses, they'll spend their money here and will generate more tax revenue without the tax liabilities and without increasing the tax rate. It is not the responsibility of this council to bail out a developer who purchased rural land in hopes that one day they could put a densely populated residential housing annexation there. With all the other growth we have in this town, why are we trying to cram a square peg in a round hole? Now, other people have gotten on these calls and they've given theories on that and some people will say follow the money. I don't want to be accusational, but there's got to be some reason that defies logic of if everyone is against it. Why you guys are for it? If we continue to grow without being responsible in a few years, when taxes are raised, the people probably aren't going to blame you directly. They're going to blame the departments that are requesting more money because they have to hire more personnel and they have more coverage area that they have to service. And so police officers and firefighters and department heads are going to feel the brunt of the voters and you guys get to walk away squeaky clean. So in the near future, and I truly believe this is going to happen with the amount of growth that we have, in the near future, when you guys say you'll get on this call and you will urge and you plead and you'll say, we have no choice but to raise taxes. Tonight, you have a choice. You have a choice right now to vote no to annex a piece of land that has been deemed rural for a reason. And has been deemed unsafe to put an extra entrance and exit on to. And that everybody in every department has said that they can't service in the near future. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Philip Cannon, go ahead.
Okay, I'm here. This is Philip Cannon. I live at four thirteen Lucy Circle. And I was on the last Zoom call. I hope the city council is listening to the people on Douglas Lane and as well as the people in Twin Eagles. I know that you're not really concerned with the people on Douglas Lane. They've got acres of land. That road is a county road, so that will be a county issue they have to take up with. Our concern is annexing Twin Eagles into the city. Now, I would like to clarify facts, which I don't think some of you really, really have dug into. You've heard a lot of facts about four thousand homes within a two two miles square radius of Twin Eagles. How much traffic, how much infrastructure is going to be needed, how the planning commission has said no, how the fire department has said no, how the police suddenly need extra resources. I don't understand why y'all don't get it. But I will call out this on Channel Four News tonight, a certain councilwoman got the facts wrong. Randy Jones can start approximately start thirty to thirty five homes if he wants to. That means grading, that would be one home. Putting a foundation in would be another home. But Randy Jones, per Ron Jones in my conversation, they only complete fifteen homes per year. Complete, that's the word, is complete, not start, complete. And with those figures, a hundred and seventy one homes complete divided by fifteen homes is eleven point four years. And two more years on the existing homes that he is now working, that he's even halfway completed that. So you're talking about thirteen point four years before this subdivision will be completed. He will not complete, and I talked to Ron Jones about this. You cannot tell him how many homes to build. He has a very limited amount of workers that work for him. He is not a big contractor. He is a small contractor. And from that, I had a conversation with Ron Jones. There is a five to eight percent turnover in Twin Eagles every single year. That includes new homes up for sale, which are probably about summer eight now up for sale. If you live in Twin Eagles, you can ride around and see. That would also probably include rental property which Ron and Randy Jones own. So you're talking about approximately thirty homes per year coming available in Twin Eagles. So to sit here and say that Twin Eagles doesn't have homes for sale and don't have homes for rent, you ain't done your homework. I'm sorry. I'm having to call you out. That's the bottom line. And there is a second way out of Twin Eagles. I don't think any one of you even realize it. It's Beckett Lane. Right beside the model home. It rides down to where the condos are being built. It goes out that exit. It doesn't help me back here in the back. I've got a fifty foot hill behind mine where the off ramp is. I've got enough problems with that. But most of the people will be going out that front entrance and any of those other homes that will be built in that hundred and seventy five, as I stated before, and the last one, they will be coming out through the the roundabout and out Twin Eagles. And I talked to one neighbor. He says, well, if they build those homes, they're going to be building right behind me. As we go out that road on Douglas Lane, we'll be going to the the little farm that has the little fruit farm down on Douglas Lane. So he he said himself that that's the only reason why he'd use that lane. So with all of this being said, pay attention to what people are saying. You are bailing out Randy Jones for one point five million dollars he paid for that land to over two years ago, per his son in law, Parker. Told me that that land was bought two and a half years ago for one point five million dollars. Now, you take, he has asked for the variance of the homes to be put from five foot from ten foot, which would be a twenty feet between each home to a five foot variance between each home, which puts ten feet between each home. Now put an air conditioner in between that. Okay, where is your land and property and start and stop and finish? Most lawn care companies in here have sixty inch lawn mowers, sixty inch equals to five feet. How are you going to get your lawn care taken care of? I don't understand why y'all do not understand this. This is a very unacceptable. You haven't done your homework.
Mr. Cannon, your time's up. I'm sorry.
May I say one more thing is that I hear a lot of pros. No, I said, excuse me, I hear a lot of cons, but no pros for. There's no baby, anybody saying this is what we've got to have, but I hear a lot of reasons why it should not be done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cannon.
Thank y'all for listening.
Jay Willingham, go ahead.
Just want to thank everybody, each of you for your service. I know this feels very repetitive, so I will be brief. My first request is to ask that you consider postponing any vote on this issue.
Miss Willingham, would you please give us your first name and address, please?
Yes, Jennifer Willingham, five seven six Douglas Lane. My first request is we postpone any vote on the issue until we can have an in person meeting so you can visually see all of the tremendous opposition to any further development in the Twin Eagles subdivision and the possible annexation. My second request would be at some proper form or some proper point for you all to explain to us, the citizens, why after the planning commission recommended not to proceed and we've had multiple meetings with lots of opposition, we still sort of keep circling back and finding all of ourselves here at this point. As citizens, we're frustrated. I know the builder is frustrated and you guys are in the middle, which makes you frustrated too. So we really want to work with you to find some productive solutions for our community. Thank you so much for your time tonight and listening to all of our thoughts.
Thank you. Pascal Jevons, go ahead.
Good evening, all. Thanks for taking the time to listen to us today. Again, even if I love Zoom because we can keep an eye on all of you and see how you're doing and see how much time you spend texting to each other and it's really, it's really great, but.
Since Jevons, that's not appropriate. You don't know what people are doing.
Okay. Apologize, Mayor. I want to thank you for all these developments because it's kind of ironic when all of you came after me claiming that I was not from there, from Galatin, so I had nothing to say and that was not a good thing. What I was saying by developing all that land and building all these buildings, they're going to be more like me. So this is great. Keep doing that. So now to get on the serious part. I agree with the previous caller who has said the decision was deferred before public meeting can resume. If I remember well, when COVID started, Mayor, you kind of said something like that. And we just spent ninety thousand plus dollars to make sure that our room in the city hall, our meeting room is COVID proof. With, I went there last week, assisted at a budget meeting where nobody had issued. Mayor, you were there. There were councilperson, there were department aides. There was no social distancing, no mask except one. So if you can meet in person for budget meetings, why can't we meet in person to raise concerns? Now, the people of Twin Eagles are right. That should not be authorized or developed. You met the news tonight. Yesterday, people were in front of the city hall with signs and I joined them because they asked me and I went talked to them and see what they had to say. I know I'm not sitting there. I didn't win the election, but I got more than four thousand votes. And what I do when people call me, I go there and talk to them. I never seen one of you there was somewhere not surprising. The only person I saw was a captain from the police department who went there to check that people were there with a permit. And we didn't have a permit. So I went to see Connie and we had a great time and got the permit and everything was fine. Another staff, when I hear that your main concern is a safety issue because there is supposedly only one exit out of Twin Eagles. If I look at the development phase, the connection is on phase five. That means at the end of the development. Now, if I take the math of one of the previous caller, that's going to take at least fourteen years. So for fourteen years, you're going to let the developer add buildings without connecting. So where is a safety issue there? Explain to me, uh, you can come in front of us and say, we need to do that because we have a safety issue. We need another exit. And this exit is not going to happen for at least fourteen years. This is just ridiculous. Follow the money. Somebody say, I don't want to go there, but I'm going to go there. Mister Jones have control of the HOA in Twin Eagles and he will not release the control of the HOA until all the development is done. That hundred thousand dollar a year at least on HOA fee. And that's why they're going to go and put more and more and more and go on fifteen a year. And something people don't talk to for my last thirty five seconds is that the nuisance that the development is going to bring. Dump trucks are measured per government papers at seventy six DBs. Our ordinance say that noise might be limited to seventy five DBs. People are going to have dump trucks going in and out of Twin Eagles on on one or nine all day long for that development and that should not be allowed. Yes, I thank you. I thanks Connie for the great job she did for us yesterday. And hopefully we'll make the right call and defer that project until we can meet in person. Appreciate all the work you're doing. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you. This is the second try with the. Okay, thank you. This is the second try with the cell phone caller. Your phone number ends in two five seven?
Yes, this is David Patton. I live at five ninety-two A Douglas Lane. I am opposed to the Twin Eagle development of extension. I've talked to a few reps. They've indicated that the exit onto Douglas Lane would strictly be an emergency exit for fire protection, I think. But as I listen, the traffic increase is gonna require a second exit. And it looks like they would probably change that to bring it on to Douglas Lane. Douglas Lane Road in places are sixteen and fifteen feet wide, which I don't think meet the minimum size of the road. Also, the estate planning looks to me like it'd be more advantageous with the infrastructure in place. That would be more tax-friendly and also to meet the infrastructure of roads, traffic, and fire protection. Also, another reason I oppose is because of the increase of fire departments that looks like we'd be required to have, which is gonna have to be paid for. And we're a part of the citizens that have to pay for that. Appreciate y'all listening. Appreciate you considering of at least tabling this to better planning could be done or better yet, to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Mr. Henshaw, I'm not seeing, I just saw a hand go up. Go ahead.
Chris Hosborn, go ahead.
Yes, I'm at six twenty Douglas Lane. Again, I'm part of the crowd of opposing this annex and road to Douglas Lane just to due to the traffic, number of cars, the size of the road. From my understanding, all the council people are supposed to represent people. I don't understand the people who are trying to vote yes on this are not concerned about safety of their citizens. I really don't understand that when so many other agencies have said this is a very safe road to be on. I don't understand how you can live with yourself saying, hey, let's just let it as much traffic on this road as we can. We don't care. We don't care about our citizens. So again, I'm sorry for being so vain about it, but it is that important to the community on Douglas Lane. We know how the cars go. I constantly have to pull over for trucks. I mean, some people fly down there and you end up in a ditch. Over the weekend, a truck was in the ditch. Cement truck was getting out of the way of another truck and boom, right into the ditch. So it is a dangerous road. And if you, I don't understand why you would want to put this road. If anything, put a crash gate. That, you know, if very few people are gonna be coming on this road, as one councilperson said, who wants the road, put a crash gate, then we know it's only there for emergencies. I don't agree with this thing. So anyway, well, thanks for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Victoria, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council there. I've spoken to you all many times. I've called some on the phone personally.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt. May we get your name and address, please?
Yes, Victoria Hagan, five nine nine Douglas Lane.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I've called a few times. I've been on every meeting since the beginning. I was actually on the county, the planning commission when Mr. Jones first brought this about back last year, when it was voted against by all planning commissioners, all of them. Then he came back with a new plan. The new plan was the hundred and seventy-one homes. And that one was done back on January twenty-fifth. It had four no votes and three yes votes. That was for the annexation. And then for the master plan of the hundred and seventy-one homes, it had five no votes and two yes votes. Then it comes to the city council, and we go round and round. I feel like you have a planning commission that should be planning what is good for the city. Apparently, they don't think it's good for the city. I have heard from one of the councilmen a few times when I spoke to him, that everybody in Twin Eagles wants this. I haven't heard one person on one Zoom meeting call in and from Twin Eagles that say they want this. Not one, not even tonight. I've heard more and more and more calling in saying they don't want it and the reasons why they don't want it. The county itself, Sumner County, which you guys are city, but Sumner County, we had a gentle, a lady out here wanting to do a wedding venue. And wedding venues only had, I think she said a maximum of a hundred and fifty cars. And it would be, you know, weekends or weddings, whatever. The county turned it down three different times. Every year she took it back before the county, and every year the county turned it down, and the reasoning was the road was dangerous. The lady had four different traffic studies done, and all four of them, the county turned it down because the road is dangerous. There's four ninety-degree turns. It's eighteen feet wide. The county, the county road department, Judy Harden, says she cannot widen the road. We own the land up to the road. I would really, really like for you to consider not annexing it into the city. I'd really like to see Mr. Jones build nice big estate homes out there. You say we need more homes, and maybe we do. There's a lot of people moving here, but a lot of people are moving here from other parts of the country that have a lot of money, that want to spend their money on nicer homes. Those little homes that he wants to build with a five-foot setback is a little crazy. I would really like it if you could postpone voting on this this evening until we can be in person. Every one of these meetings have been on Zoom. Lots of the people can't get through. I have a lady I've been texting. I have two friends, as a matter of fact, that keep texting me this evening. They can't get through. They can't understand why, and they've been trying. Both of them are from Twin Eagles. And so putting this on hold, postponing this, would be probably the best thing for everyone in Twin Eagles and Douglas Lane. I appreciate your time, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Bob Vero, oh, sorry. Bob Vero?
Thank you. This is Bob Vero, six fourteen Douglas Lane. Just want to thank my neighbors for their continued stamina and support. I also want to thank the council for your public service. I think you've, you know, there's no need to keep reiterating the same concerns. Our concerns are primarily around safety. I think critically, the planning council has advised against this. And I know as council members, you have been seeking some alternative, maybe other than a straight up or straight no vote. We would encourage you to vote no, but if you need an alternative, I think there's really been a case made this evening to postpone for further safety study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vero. Okay, I see no one else with their, another one with their hand raised. Okay, Jeff, back to you then.
Kelly Lang, go ahead.
Yes, I'm on one fourteen Star Court in Fairview Heights next to the proposed Winston Place and across from the proposed Bowles Development. And I wanted to express my concerns about the traffic with the new development. It sounds like they're planning on bringing Wedgwood all the way through the proposed Winston Place up through the properties owned by the Yates, which I've heard have been sold to another developer and connecting to Bowles. But the immediate plan is for Wedgwood to come across and connect into our neighborhood, which currently has no sidewalks on Summerland Drive. That would be the exit route on that. It would be likely to be used as a cut-through to try to skip through the one oh nine twenty-five intersection. And once Wedgwood was developed, it wouldn't be going through our neighborhood. But currently, people are likely to skip the traffic and cut through our neighborhood with no sidewalks. We also have the neighborhood behind us, as well as some of our neighbors on Summerland Drive, who are currently having flooding issues that they've not been able to get addressed for years. So we'd like some assurances that the water retention plan for that development is sufficient to prevent any exacerbation of the existing problems, if not improve them, since the grade on that property goes that direction. Sorry, I had to deal with the dog for a moment. But just, I've heard mentions of traffic mitigation being something that should be looked at on that, but I haven't seen anything that's actually planned to reduce the speed of people coming through that neighborhood and into our neighborhood eventually through Wedgwood. I know with the community plan right now, all of the new neighborhoods have to have that walkability in the sidewalks. But who's responsible for the existing neighborhoods and making sure that we have sidewalks when these new neighborhoods are connected to us? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Andy Leith, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to state a few things for the record. Andy Leith, one one four B West Main Street. I am the developers representative for Twin Eagles. I'll go ahead and let everybody know I do get paid to represent him. But I want to bring to attention a few things that have been said that I feel like are a little inaccurate. One fact that I'd like to draw attention to, back around two thousand, so twenty years ago, what is now Twin Eagles, used to be a hundred and seventy-six acre row crop farm. And being born and raised and growing up in Sumner County, I've seen a lot of these things happen over the last forty years. And yes, I can understand the concerns of the neighbors. They don't want the development. They don't want to see the farmland go away. And even the ones that are in Twin Eagles right now, living there, where their house is planted, was a cornfield twenty years ago. And we could go to every subdivision in the city and say the same thing. But, you know, Randy did not have access to Highway one oh nine. That's always been off limits to him. Hat and tracks a different scenario that you all are aware of. As it was said, the Beckett Place up front will provide another access to twenty-five. We have brought that up to planning commission and the city staff before. And some of the things about the HOA and the money, I don't even know if I need to address that because those claims are so ludicrous. But this is typically done by developers so that they can control the look and the feel of the development until such time that they're complete with it. And, you know, the last thing that's a little bit, you know, Randy bought this farm with the entire intention of connecting back to Douglas. So, you know, guys, I understand the neighbors. I understand the community not wanting development. It's every time that we try to have a project in Galatin, and I really can relate to them, growing up on a farm, living on a farm. But these things, Twin Eagles was a farm twenty years ago. So I appreciate your time, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The cell phone ending in two two six.
Hi, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, this is Karen Piper. I live at eight fifteen Douglas Lane. My mother also owns a house that I'm part owner on over in Twin Eagle at four twelve Maya Marie, which actually her back door is almost against my back field. So I'm very much aware of the tight circumstances. I'm just gonna pretty much reiterate everything everybody else has said. I have lived out here for thirty-five years. I'm in the first S curve that you come in off of Red River Road. So my point that I'm trying to make is that this road is, as everybody else says, is just way too dangerous to have an additional road coming out on at the extension. You're gonna come in over Sandy Kent's, in between Sandy and Bill Duncan's old place. And that's just not a good location to be. Surely, I think that there would be somewhere on the backside of Twin Eagle that would bring you out away from properties that people have owned. Sandy's grandmother, step-grandmother, owned that property on the Kent Farm. This property here where I'm at now, we have lived here for thirty-five years. My husband passed away eleven years ago when we built this house. We built this place because we liked the country. We liked the narrow road. We liked our little canopy of trees that was down past my house. If you put this road in where it's supposed to be coming out at, you will be coming, turning left, and you will go right in front of my house. So that means I'm gonna have a lot of traffic. I don't like traffic. That's why I have moved out of the country. I was raised on a hundred and ten acre farm off of Dobbin's Pike, and this is just a little more convenient for my girls when they were here. My daughters also own this property. There's forty acres that is theirs, five that is mine. So what I want to just ask is that you please remember that there are people who have their livelihood here, who have lived here a long time. Again, repeating what other people have said, the road is too narrow. It's too curvy. We have bicyclists that come through here for enjoyment. That's what this road's about. Motorcyclists that come through here, and people walking. Also, when it rains like it did two weeks ago, the end of the road was flooded so bad that you could not get out. And I think Scott Goodwin had pictures of it that he had posted on our group page. But anyway, you can't get out the end. Not only once the water goes down, you've got logs and debris floating in the road, and it ends up going out onto twenty-five as well. So please ask, think about all of that. I know I'm just repeating what everybody else has said, but would repeat this. And the gentleman who mentioned that the property, the plans when Douglas, when Twin Eagle was built, I lived here when Twin Eagle was built. I lived here before Twin Eagles was built. So I'm gonna debate that, that it was supposed to be an access from Twin Eagle into Douglas Lane, because we were never notified of it. My in-laws owned the property before we did. So just repeating again, thank you for your time. I know this is a tough job. A lot of y'all I know personally, and y'all know me, go to church with you, worked with you, lived here all my life, graduated from Galatin. So anyway, please reconsider, look at another area. You know, you should have, Mr. Jones should have thought about what he was doing before he built so many houses. And I understand, we need exit roads, but we can't, schools can't handle what we've got now. That means we're gonna have to build more schools, more fire reports, you know, everything's gonna have to be increased. So thank you again. Have a blessed day and evening, and I appreciate every one of y'all's time. Have a good evening, and thank you.
Excuse me, Jeff?
Thank you, Ms. Piper.
I was just notified that there's several people that are having trouble calling in. So I wondered if Jeff could just give the instructions again.
Sure, the number that you dial is four seven zero three eight one two five five two. And then they, that's four seven zero three eight one two five five two, and then they'd hit webinar ID eight three zero zero five two two nine two one eight. That information is on our website at the top and also on our Facebook page under the events.
Thank you.
In case you're wondering what I'm doing, I'm testing it to see if our phone number shows up when I call in. Does anyone else on the council try to call in? I'm gonna try it on my cell phone because I'm scared that my number won't be rec, I don't know the number, the line it chose when it called out.
I'm trying right now, please.
Okay, thanks. Bear with us, y'all. I'm so sorry.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by Zoom.
Jeff, do you see, do you see me on there, Jeff?
Would that be your cell? What's the last two digits to your cellphone number?
Uh, 11.
I had just called in and the number went through. You do have to hit a pound after you enter the webinar ID, and then it'll ask you for a participant ID. You could just hit pound again, and that will get you through to the meeting.
But Ms. Smiley, it's not showing up as
Mine had shown up. I hung up once I saw my number. I can try it one more time. Wait, I'm gonna hit star nine and see what it does. Uh huh, yeah, that worked. When I did call in, my number is there. I raised my hand and it is, you know, it's showing that.
I'm on. Yep.
I think it just takes a minute to show up on the screen.
I'll turn them on back off.
I'm trying to unraise my hand, Jeff, don't call me.
Here's the number ending in 96. Okay, I can lower your hand.
I'm gonna hang up now. That looks, okay. So we know that the 2552 number is working. I don't see that anyone else has joined. I appreciate that information, Ms. Love, but I don't really know what to do except to move forward with the meeting at this point. Counsel, anybody else have any ideas, suggestions, recommendations?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
What if you just move on and if there's other comments, take the calls later.
Yes, there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for us to have comments. And if you were not able to get on at the beginning of the meeting, let us know that and we will let you make comments on agenda-related items. If you were unable to get in, and I assume that would be via phone call. So with that, I'll move on to mayor's comments. I do have some information to share with you all tonight. First of all, I want to offer just a huge congratulations and sincere thanks to Gallatin Fire Department. You may have heard the news that there was an ISO study that was done recently by the insurance service's office. And Gallatin has had a rating of a four for quite some time, which is a pretty good rating. But this year, they actually scored a two. So to give you an idea of how rare that is in our city, in cities in the state of Tennessee, there are actually only 34 Class 2 departments in Tennessee and 772 in the entire country. So that is a that is a great accomplishment. That ISO will actually take effect on July 1st. I do want to just share with you some information that was shared with me by the fire department. They believe that our improved score was due to our increase in staffing, the additional station, the training that we're doing, our community risk reduction programs, including our inspections happening on a very regular basis, public education outreach, communications and water supply also positively impacting the score along with our establishment of our ECC. I want to thank these individuals because these were the ones that kind of did the hard work and put the pencil to paper and gathered the information and represented Gallatin Fire Department in this pursuit. Assistant Chief Robert Ritchie, Fire Marshal Todd Wagner, Battalion Chief Tyler Rackey, Captain Charlie Johnson, Captain Ben West, Lieutenant Rich Goddard and Assistant Chief Scott Woodward. And I do believe that Captain Johnson was the lead on that. But I know all those gentlemen worked really hard to make this happen for our city. So make sure you share your thanks with them and recognize what a wonderful accomplishment that is for our city. I also want to give a shout out to all the people that have been out in recent weeks picking up trash around our community. I'm hearing that people feel like it's making a difference. There are some individuals that are really excelling. I would feel really bad if I didn't recognize our own Bill McCord, who is out every single weekend picking up trash in Gallatin. And then there is a man that I've not had the pleasure of meeting yet, but who has also been picking out, picking up trash every weekend and has picked up a substantial amount of trash. His name is actually, I hope you don't mind me sharing this, but Levon Galian, I think I pronounced that right. Just a young man who wants to make a difference in our city, and he's been doing that beyond that. We've had so many school groups and scout groups and and it's so appreciative. Of course, we all find it absurd that anybody would litter, but we're most appreciative of those people who are trying to help remedy the problem. I hope others in the community will respect the work that's being done. Finally, I want to mention that yesterday, yesterday, this Tennessee Department of Tourism was here in Sumner County, and they were recognizing a Gallatin legend and a gentleman by the name of William Haas Allen. You may have known him as Haas Allen or the Hostman on W L A C, which was the local, though widely widely received radio station out of here and out of Gallatin. And Hostman or Haas Allen was a DJ that really shepherded lesser-known genres of music to the masses and made popular or made more mainstream rhythm and blues and African-American gospel and some other music that really impacted music to the point, I think I said yesterday, we can't know his impact because music is what it is today because of what he brought to music. And so the State Department of Tourism recognized him. I didn't mention how. There is actually a Tennessee Music Pathways. It's throughout the state. It recognizes musical contributions by individuals throughout the state. His marker, his Tennessee Music Pathways is actually up at Bloodsow Historical Fort, which you may say, why is that? I can tell you because he's actually a descendant or was actually a descendant of the Rogan family. And of course, the Rogan Cottage is on that property. So you can go out there, you can see the marker, you can read about him, and you can also learn about the Rogan Cottage and what that fort's all about when you're out there. So I just want to acknowledge that that was done as such a appropriate and rightful recognition of his contributions, not just to music, but to our world. And we're so proud that he was from Gallatin. And so I think that is it for mayor's comments this evening. So we're going to move on into the regular agenda unless this council is feeling like they want to take a short recess. Anyone?
Now, let's move on.
Okay, if I disappear, I need Vice Mayor Fennell to take over for a minute. But, okay, we'll move on. On the agenda, we have public hearing on ordinance 02103-16. For that, I'm gonna recognize Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance, the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee approving an amendment, amended preliminary master development plan for Winston Place on a 19.84 acre parcel, tax map 114, parcel 046-02, located east of Highway 109 and south of Red River Road, authorizing the revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Hey, this is public hearing on ordinance 02103-16. If you wish to speak, we'll do it just like we did with public comment. If you're on the phone, you use star nine to indicate, to make your hand raised, indicate that you'd like to speak. If you're on the computer, you will go to hover with your cursor down at the bottom of the screen and click on the raise your hand function. It will show that you wish to speak. I'm going through all the attendees. I'm seeing no one indicating that they wish to speak. I see one person who's raised their hand indicating they would wish to speak.
Paul Ring, go ahead.
Hi, Council. This is the topic I talked about earlier. Just wanted to reiterate some of our concerns about the traffic. Again, for my wife and myself, it's not about the plan. It's actually, I'm very happy with what's been proposed for you guys. We're just very concerned about the amount of through traffic coming through here, the safety of our kids that are in this area, and the potential for floods behind our houses. Lastly, would be the power outages. So just wanted to kind of give a refresher because I know you guys have been a little bombarded. So I do appreciate your time. Thanks again for everything you guys do.
Mayor, may I say something, Mr. Ring?
Sure.
Mr. Ring, I think last time you got on there and asked about power outages, I did call the electric department the last time you mentioned that, and I think they checked into it and looked at your situation. I don't know, but don't be surprised if someone from the electric department does not call you. You are okay.
That sounds wonderful. They can come by, we can have a cup of coffee with some masks on.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Fennell. Okay, I see when no one, no one else indicating that they wish to speak on this public hearing, so I'm going to declare it closed and move to item number two, which is public hearing on ordinance 02103-17. And for that, I recognize Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin rezoning 35.59 plus or minus acres consisting of 26.16 plus or minus acres from the medium density residential district to R10 medium density planned residential development district and 9.43 plus or minus acres from the R15 medium density residential district to the PNC planned neighborhood commercial district with a preliminary master development plan for the Harsh property located north of Cairo Road and south of Hartswell Pike, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
A public hearing on ordinance 02103-17 is now open. You wish to speak, you use star nine on the phone to raise your hand or you press the raise your hand function on the computer. Yeah, see, no one on the attendees list. No one on the attendees list indicating that they would wish to speak to this public hearing. So I'll declare public hearing on ordinance 02103-17 closed. Item three is public hearing on resolution R2103-28, and Councilwoman Love is recognized again.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin adopting a plan of services for the annexation of a 44.79 plus or minus acre parcel and an adjacent 3.1 plus or minus acre segment of abandoned railroad right-of-way located north of Hartswell Pike and east of Airport Road and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
A public hearing on resolution R2103-28, and one person has raised their hand so far and became they wish to speak. Jeff?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you so much. Michelle Givance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, this annexation, according to the plan of service, requires a fire station to be built. I haven't heard any discussion about how we're going to pay for that. And on the the projection from the fire department, it's putting the industrial park station number six in 2023, 2024 budget year. So that's coming up pretty soon. I don't know about this. I mean, if this is gonna, if this is going to be an expense that is going to cause a tax increase, I'm opposed to that annexation. I think that we need to stop annexing at this time. Thank you so much.
Can you see no one else indicating that they wish to speak? So I'll declare public hearing on resolution R2103-28 closed. Item four is public hearing on resolution R2103-29, and Councilwoman Love, it's yours again.
Thank you again. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin annexing a 44.79 plus or minus acre parcel and an adjacent 3.1 plus or minus acre segment of abandoned railroad right-of-way located north of Hartswell Pike and east of Airport Road into the City of Gallatin, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assigning the annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is also a public hearing.
This is another public hearing, resolution R2103-29. Ms. Givance, you may go ahead and speak.
I am muted. Am I, am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. So yes, just I want to put on record that right now I am opposed to further annexations that require building fire stations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no one else with their hand raised. So we will move to the next item, which is item number five, and it is a public hearing on ordinance 02103-18, and Councilwoman Love.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin rezoning 44.79 plus or minus acres and an adjacent 2.4 plus or minus acre segment of abandoned CSX Railroad right-of-way from the RR Rural Residential County District to R8 PRD Medium Density Residential Planned Residential Development District with a preliminary master development plan for Bledsoe Springs and zoning a 1.06 plus or minus acre of abandoned CSX Railroad from RR Rural Residential County District to Industrial Restrictive District located north of Hartswell Pike and east of Airport Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is also a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. This is public hearing for ordinance 02103-18. Anyone wishing to speak, you would raise your hand and indicate that you would like to. See, no one with their hand raised. So I will say public hearing on ordinance 02103-18 is closed. We will move along now to item number six, which is resolution R2102-15. And for that, Councilman Overton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution, the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of 59.10 acre parcel, tax map 114, parcel 016-03, located north of Wildcat Run and east of Douglas Lane and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander, and that opens the floor for discussion.
I guess I'll, I'll say something about this whole development issue. I've made myself clear that I don't believe that that country, that county road is safe at all for any added traffic. I think we need to pay attention to the people that actually live out there and who know that area and experience it every day. Also, that when Mr. Cannon mentioned Beckett Lane as being an alternate exit, that's the first I've ever heard of that. So I'm not sure why that's not been brought up before, except that somebody mentioned it wasn't that planning commission didn't like that. And that was before I became a member of that, so I didn't know anything about it. So it seems like the, the safety of the people inside Twin Eagles that are concerned about having only one entrance or exit, it sounds like, sounds like there is one that I haven't heard about before. I, I received pictures from someone who had taken them this week. That road, Douglas Lane, was, was obviously flooded. And there was also a picture of a tractor. There's no way anybody could have gotten around that, around that. I don't know about what's happened before we were on, before I became a member of city council, but I don't see the point of annexing more land and just adding
I don't see the point of annexing more land and just adding more and more houses. Which, what, without, I mean, that should have, it's, in my opinion. That should have not been done in the first place if we were already having too many houses with, without another exit or entrance. Which it looks like on Beckett Lane, there is one. But. I, I just, along with the other development that's been, that's been approved out there. You know, I grew up on a country road. I know that they're dangerous. I know that that one is worse than most county roads. Because of those huge hairpin turns. And. I just think that this is not a good idea, and I think we should at least look into. This Beckett Lane further and do some more research on it.
And I'd like to bring up point two, because I kind of, I'm, I agree with Councilwoman Love. I mean. The road is not a safe road. I mean, I travel a lot, ride bicycles out there quite a bit during good weather. It's just not a safe road to funnel that traffic out on. I would have no problem with the subdivision as it is. As long as there was another entrance to that subdivision somewhere. But, you know, that's why I don't agree with the annexation or the resolutions coming up because of. That is the main reason, is the safety issue, putting it on the road on to Douglas Lane. And I think I've stressed that, and I know Councilwoman Love has too over the past few meetings. And I think. The road she's talking about, does anybody know where that is, Beckwood Road? Is that not in the front of the subdivision out there? Yeah, so that's, it's not a, it's not really a second entrance going in and out of that development. I mean, it's. It's still a second road, but it's going on to twenty-five right at the beginning of the subdivision, I believe.
But it is, it's not another road that would be an exit?
It's a road, but it's, it's one you wouldn't really use.
Yeah, you have, you have to look it up. You have to look at it.
Have you been out there, Councilwoman Love?
You can see it if you go out there.
And I think if there were, I think the point is, is if there were an issue somewhere in the middle of the subdivision, how would that back part be able to. Get out, and that wouldn't really make much of a difference. Councilman Fan, I see your hand is raised if you'd like to be recognized. If you're muted, unmute.
I'm gonna make a motion that we defer this. And maybe study it a little more. I'd like to talk to Mr. Lee sometime and see if he has an alternative.
I'll second it.
Yeah, the motion to defer by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilwoman Love. I mean, anyone want to, or do we discuss the motion to defer?
Are you gonna stay, you're gonna defer it to the next council meeting in a couple of weeks?
Yeah, that'd work.
Okay. I just didn't time frame, okay.
I'd like to ask something, too, is on.
Is this on the motion to defer, Councilwoman? Okay, so let's go ahead at this point and vote on the motion to defer, and I'm going to ask that Ms. Kitterell call the roll for the vote, please. Actually. Never mind, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
No.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Six yeses and one no, Mayor.
Hey, we have a.
Yes, next question is, are we, is this all three of them? Five, six, and, I mean, six, seven, and eight?
I think it should be.
I think then we would have to vote on that. I do want to bring one thing to your attention. I was gonna do it, but then I realized it wasn't proper at the point we were at. We will still be meeting virtually at the point of the next council meeting. Based on the, the decision that you all made a couple of weeks ago, because you decided that you wanted to vote virtually, I mean, vote. Meet virtually through the end of April. I tell you that just to see if that changes what you might wish to do.
I've heard that there's a petition asking us to wait until we were in person. Is anybody, I mean, have you all seen that?
I don't have a problem with that.
And I don't think it matters. Except that you had so many people mention it. I, I, I'm saying what I don't think matters is whether or not we have the petition. I wasn't saying it doesn't matter. Whether we're virtual or not, but I'm saying that, you know, if anyone's seen that petition, I just think. You know, several people did mention that, and so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Has been mentioned by a lot of people that they would like to be able to get through to us and, and see this in person. Can we amend it to that, well, we just voted on it?
Well, no, you, you could actually make another motion for a different date, and you could actually include. Seven and eight in that if you wish. I'm looking at Ms. Hamacoli to see if she nods or shakes her head.
You could go ahead and make one motion for seven and eight. You can't. You've already voted on, on six, but I guess you could do eight, you could reconsider it. You, you, the vote has already been taken.
Yeah, so anyone that voted in favor of it could vote to reconsider or could make a motion to reconsider. And then we would follow through with that if you wish to do that with item number six.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
A motion by Councilman Hayes.
Okay.
Reconsider. Was that a second by Councilman Fan?
Yes.
And we have a motion, a second to reconsider, so we will vote on that motion. Ms. Kitterell, if you would call the roll for that, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you. So that does open the floor for you to. Have a discussion about what you might like to do.
Okay, I'd like to. May I speak?
You certainly may, Ms. George.
Thank you. I would like to know from the builder. About the setbacks, because that, when that came up today, that's concerning to me.
Okay.
So in conversation, I guess, with Mr. Leach, maybe we can find that, that answer.
Okay, um, I think, I think the trajectory that we're on at this point, and I mean, we certainly get that information, especially if you all move forward with. Deferring this to a later meeting, but I think the direction that. I don't know, any, any other council members wish to weigh in?
I was under the impression that we was gonna. Vote on six, seven, and eight as far as to have a discussion virtual. In person with the, with the citizens.
We have to do six. Well, yeah, we have to do six separately, because what you have is a motion to reconsider, so you would have to make the motion on six again. To do whatever it is you wish to do, and then we could move forward with that. Ms. George, are you okay with us? With getting with Mr. McCord or Mr. Lee between now and the next meeting to get that information?
I will do that, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Councilman Alexander, that then. Motion to defer to the next in-person meeting, which would be.
I mean, that, that's what, that's what we, we vote on now. I guess, we, why we rescind that vote at first. Now we're trying to decide when we really want to discuss six, seven, and eight.
But you have to do six separately, because we're in the, we are, right now, the posture that we are in is reconsidering six, so. That would be, I'll just tell you that right now, the first council meeting date in May is May fourth. And at this point, you all have voted to have virtual meetings through the end of April, so. And you're, of course, welcome to change that if you so desire.
Yes, whenever you want to meet the fan.
Can I withdraw my original motion?
We've, we've done all that.
We've already, okay.
Open the floor for reconsideration, and so at this point, someone can make any motion they so desire.
I'll make a motion that we defer all three, six, seven, and eight.
We had, can we do that, Susan? We need to just go with six since we're only reconsidering six.
You really need to just stick with six, and then you can do a separate for seven and eight jointly.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we defer seven and eight until May fourth.
We need to stick with six first. I know, it's confusing. Let's go with six first, and so, and the date is May fourth.
In other words, do you want to discuss? Sixth May, or do you want to change? Virtual meeting to in-person meeting for April, because right now.
I think we already changed it. May the fourth would be in-person, wouldn't it?
Well.
It is right now, but the, the way we got it, we understand that. We're saying that we're not gonna meet in person for the remainder of April.
Yeah.
Do you want to change that?
We're gonna move to May fourth, in my understanding.
Well, here, Councilman Fan's motion is to defer item number six to May fourth. Another option could be what you're saying, Councilman Alexander, but his motion is currently to move it to May fourth, which at this point, you all have planned to reconvene in person.
I guess that's what I was confused, that we want to continue just waiting till May the fourth.
Like he stated, May the fourth.
I will second Steve's motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to defer resolution R two, one, zero, two dash fifteen until the meeting on May fourth.
In person, yes. That's right, Mr. Fan.
Discuss on that. All right, Ms. Kitterell's gonna take a vote.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. So item number six is deferred until our meeting on May fourth. And so I'm thinking that you guys wish to follow with deferring item seven and eight, if someone wants to make a motion.
I'm, I would, I move we defer seven and eight to read as the last motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Love?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman George, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Ms. Kitterell will take the vote.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. Item number nine, second reading on ordinance O two, one, zero, three dash nineteen, Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. For Miracle Park Donation Revenue Fund to Miracle Park Expense Fund. That, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion?
It looks really good out there right now.
It sure does. It looks great.
Very impressive. This is, and we look forward to it opening soon. So this is second reading on ordinance O two, one, zero, three dash nineteen, and Ms. Kitterell will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you. Second reading on O two, one, zero, three dash nineteen goes past unanimously. Item number ten is first reading on ordinance O two, one, zero, four dash twenty. Councilman Fan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating one million dollars from donations from businesses to gateway drive extension construction. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? And then this is first reading on ordinance O two, one, zero, four dash twenty, and Ms. Kitterell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven ahs and zero nays.
Item number eleven is first reading on ordinance O two, one, zero, four dash twenty-one, and. Very deliberately, I assign this one to you, Councilman Alexander.
Yeah, because I felt so bad when I saw a little man landing in the street today. Yes, this is an appropriate remaining two thousand and fourteen bond fund. And two thousand and sixteen bond fund from light crosswalk, and that's definitely so moved.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, and an amen. Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Maybe John won't hit him anymore.
Runs over him on purpose, I think.
So that motion, Miss Councilman Alexander's second, was Councilman Overton. Ms. Kitterell, with that, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitterell. It goes past unanimously. Item number twelve is resolution R two, one, zero, three dash thirty, and Councilwoman George is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, supporting the Gallatin Beautiful Application for Walmart. Local community grant to be used to purchase litter, cleanup supplies for volunteers. I so move.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman George, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Kitterell with the roll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven ahs and zero nays.
Thank you. It passes unanimously, and. This has probably been a very long meeting for the person that this last resolution is about. This is resolution R two, one, zero, three dash thirty-two, and for it, Councilman Hayes, you are recognized.
Yeah, this is a resolution appointing Richard De Priest as superintendent of Public Works and establishing initial salary. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for any discussion. All right, with that, Ms. Kitterell, for the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven ahs and zero nays.
And Mayor gets to vote on this, too.
Oh, yes, I do, and I will, I, I'll also vote in favor. Bye.
Thank you, then. Eight ahs and, and zero nays.
And, and I would like to be the first to congratulate Mr. De Priest as his selection to this role, and, and we are so grateful for all that Zach Wilkinson has done, and we know that. Mr. De Priest is going to proceed on in a very. Successful. There's that. No, that's Richard, okay. Are you both there? There, yeah, they are, right, both there. So there's Zach and Richard, one going, one coming, or actually, one going, one staying.
Still staying. Zach ain't going nowhere.
Mr. De Priest, I'm really looking forward to having you take the leadership of that department. I know that you are driven and determined and excited about the opportunity, and I know that you're going to do so well, and so. We're excited to see the future with you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, as well, for the support that you've all shown me. Look forward to working with y'all, continuing to work with y'all, and some of y'all I've worked with very much, but I look forward to it, and if need anything, I'll be here. Thank you.
Well, our congratulations to you. Anybody else want to say anything?
Welcome.
Give some applause.
Got some big shoes to fill.
You did.
I know it.
Well, and I think, and, and, and I think we praised Zach a lot. Zach, I hope you have felt the love from, love and appreciation from this council and know that. You're relieving with our great appreciation and best wishes and.
Best on the films mutual.
Thank you.
Zach, we appreciate you, buddy.
Thank you.
Take one of them little men, which is that.
I have a party when the.
Take them all with him.
Yeah, we, I, I, I bet Councilman Alexander might get a special gift of a little man.
How do you know you want one of these put up in your?
He gonna get a bucket of chicken. How about you? I'm talking about Zach.
We are at the. We are at the end of the agenda and we are going to move now to other business. And I do have the item of the car show if you all want to discuss that or if you just want to say they're not.
If they're not wanting it on top, if they don't need it to be talked about tonight, then what?
I don't think there's any discussion, I know. Yeah.
No.
Well, I just, yeah, I I I want you know, I just, I I think that as different situations are considered for that parking lot while that courthouse is under construction, that we just need to be very, my opinion is that we need to be very protective of that parking because it is essential to our downtown merchants.
And that's what I've tried to say all along when Craig brought this up is, you know, we we we're gonna have some serious issues with the parking as it is, and and this is just not a time and place for it right now in the downtown area. So but I'm glad the business owners chimed in and 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 give everybody their opinion on what they wanted, what they didn't want. So I appreciate that.
Anyone else have anything to say about that? Okay, well, with that, I'm gonna move on and talk about two road closures that I have. Both of these are for the annual festival. First one is coming up on April twenty-fourth and that's Square Fest twenty twenty-one. And they would like to close our, well, it's Main Street from Boyers to Locust, Water from Smith to Broadway, and the Public Square from Main Street to Water Street, which is usually closed for that festival. And so I and it's from six AM until six PM. So I would ask if you're supportive. And I I I'll go ahead and tell you, the other one is for the annual Main Street Festival, which which happens on October twelfth. I'm sorry, October second of twenty twenty-one. Again, closure six AM to six PM, and just as I described for the Square Fest closure.
Are those streets the same as always?
I don't know.
Nothing different?
I don't have anything to compare it to. It seeming to me as it is.
Most definitely.
I second it.
Those are the same road roads as usual to be closed.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And all the all the signatures are here from my department heads, too, I should have said. So I have a motion. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did, Mayor.
And Councilwoman Love, you seconded?
Right.
All right, with that, I suppose Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven ahs and zero nays.
And for the public, thank you all. It does pass unanimously. And for the public, that means that you have Square Fest on April twenty-fourth to look forward to. So um, a cherished and loved springtime event here in Gallatin put on by our historic downtown Gallatin organization, and it is going to continue this year. I know that many are looking forward to it. That's all the other business that I have this evening. I would ask if anyone else on the council has anything? Okay, I don't see that anyone.
I'm sorry, may I have anyone call you or contact about having a problem getting the shots? Or COVID? Have anyone call you about the COVID shots, having a problem trying to get them?
Um, no, but I wish they would because we have been getting calls from providers of the vaccines that are looking for people to to inoculate. So if there if there are people that are looking to make a connection, we have some pharmacies here in Gallatin that are doing it, and then the health department is still doing it.
Senior citizen.
Yeah, well, and we actually have some people that are doing some rides for seniors if they need to get to the vaccine. So the resources are there to help people get vaccines. And if we can help connect people to resources, certainly our office is happy to do that, as are a lot of other agencies in Gallatin. So you might want to fill me in offline and see if I can help an individual, and I will.
No, no one has contacted me. I just want everybody to know that, you know, if you don't have the shot, you please get them because they're really available now.
They are, and they're open for anyone sixteen-year-old.
Exactly.
And I do want to mention that Ms. Floyd is having a birthday this week, so happy birthday to her. Y'all be sure and wish her a happy one. She has enjoyed quite the year with us here at the City of Gallatin, and we're thankful for her.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Connie.
Linda, is that your birthday, Kat?
Any other other business?
Yeah, I think everybody ready to go.
Everybody's ready to go. Well, we still have public recognition on non-aging-related items. We have some attendees who have indicated they wish to speak, and so we will go through the same process as we did at the first meeting. And if you'd like to speak and you're on the phone, you star nine to raise your hand. If you are on the computer, you will use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. We have one person who's raised their hand, Mr. Chivance. You may go ahead and mute yourself.
Good evening again. Sorry to take your time. I know it's been a long meeting, but again, I want to come back to the fire department and the secondary gear issue. I'm surprised I haven't heard any comment on that again. Uh, and that's, you know, that should be a place. It's a matter of money like usual, but when it's a matter of safety, that should be on a priority. The second staff, I'm still trying to understand is what happened with the interim chief and the departure of Chief Williams. Again, I haven't heard this council say anything about Chief Williams. He's six years four years in the department and stuff who happened today happened under his watch. So that would have been great. So I'm gonna thank the Chief Williams for his service. To go back to the interim chief, I'm still trying to understand what happened there and how quick that happened. The interim chief was voted in by this council, came from an outside. And I talked to people who didn't even know there was an opening of on the position. And I think the only thing this the city did is to post it for forty-eight hours on social media and to announce it on that council. So people who were not online at that time, who don't follow the city Gallatin council didn't know. So I was at fair for people from the outside to be able to apply. Only one applied, and we know why. Now, Mayor, I'm gonna use your words again, cut me, cut me if I'm wrong, but you said that when you were talking about the interim chief who got voted in, you said he was not qualified. Uh, he didn't, sorry, he didn't meet the the qualification for the job. Uh, I know I sent you few emails and I appreciate the time you take to respond to me or send me to Susan maybe time. And the last email we talked about, you sent me to a state law telling me that the state law was taking over the Gallatin. So I did some research and I found that the Tennessee Administrative Code, Act eleven twenty, Human Resources, Chapter eleven twenty, Zero Two Employment Practices, Section eleven twenty, Zero Two Eleven Appointments, who say that to be eligible for an interim appointment, the employee shall meet the minimum qualification, job classification to which the employee is appointed. So maybe you can look into that because, again, you know, I'm not a lawyer and I know we talked a lot with Susan and she have different views than what I have. But if I read that, I think the appointment should not have been there. Because again, to use your own words, Mayor, he was not meeting the minimum qualification. Again, I had people in my career. I run I run flight department and for wealthy people and I had I had candidate. And thanks to the foyer, I I got access to the resumes and what I see really really bothered me that you know, the assistant chief was not chosen for for the qualification for for the job. When I see the experience of that guy and the other side, I see the experience of the guy was pushed through. That's like having a five-star Michelin and having having on one side the good-looking guy, British chef, and on the other side, the other good-looking guy, me, who can barely fix an omelet and choose me. So I'm not gonna go on the details of the resume. People can get them if they want, but I'm still surprised. So I would appreciate Susan if you can look into the state staff to make sure that this appointment is valid. Because I don't think it is. So thank you for your time. And again, you know, I would appreciate if you talk about secondary gear for firefighters. And I'm gonna stop ten second short. Have a great evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on non-aging-related items? I don't see anyone. Let me go now. I see no one. Do you, Mr. Henshaw? Okay, all right, we will say public recognition on non-aging-related items is closed. And we are at the end of our agenda and may adjourn. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I have a second, I'm sure. Y'all have a lovely evening. Thank you all for joining us. Those participating in the meeting, I know it's been a long night. Thank you for hanging with us and thank you for your thoughtful comments and wanting to make our city better and caring about Gallatin. We do look forward to seeing you all in person. Take care, everybody. Have a good night. Bye.
Thank you, Bob.